Very good. That's what we want to hear. Yeah. Yeah. And maybe. That would be good to be looking at that system. Be looking at that like some. That would be good to be looking at that system. Be looking at.
Sister. Start my guy. So, deputy. Start. Okay. Start. Deputy. Start. Okay. I had those girls come down front. I said, I'm glad you're. I have you. I have those girls come down front. I said, I'm glad you're. I have you. I have those girls come down front. I said, I'm glad you're. I have you. I have those girls come down front. I said, I'm glad you're. I have you. Is there a sign? Is there a sign? Is there a sign? They probably come. They were. 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 That's all. That's all.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we welcome you to the September meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we welcome you to the September meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We will officially call this meeting to order. I don't think you'll be very comfortable down there. Obviously, we're in a little warm last time. Different digs than where we usually are. We'll be meeting here for the next couple of months. September, October. All goes well. We'll be back at the old courthouse. We'll be meeting here for November or so months. Thank you for that. We are live streaming tonight. Don't ask me to get too technical about this. Thank you for that. We are live streaming tonight. If you go on Facebook, you'll be directed to YouTube. YouTube is live streaming tonight. I understand. So, if you go on Facebook, you will be directed to YouTube. YouTube is live streaming tonight. So, Facebook is not. To this process as well. To watch from home. For those that may be watching from home and working around getting ready. You might prefer these chairs better than those benches. Look at the courthouse. Standing around getting ready. They're a little more comfortable. You might prefer these chairs better than those benches. Hope it's not too inconvenient. This is our. They're a little more comfortable. Most gate complex. Thank you to county offices. I hope it's not too inconvenient. This is our. A lot of our social service activities go on in this facility. County offices and services are provided here. A lot of our social service activities go on in this facility. We were experiencing. It's been a big help to the county helping us to. Welcome to our process tonight. We were experiencing. We begin with our pledge of allegiance. And Bishop Michael Tognan will be giving our invocation tonight. We will begin with our pledge. We have our flag on the wall. Bishop Michael Tognan will be giving our invocation tonight. So, we stand. We have our flag.
And the United States of America and to the Republic. I pledge allegiance to the nation under the United States of America. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The nation under God. Individuals. With liberty and justice for all.
Your words with me.
Thank you.
Father in Jesus' name.
Bishop Tognan.
Your word says in everything we are to give thanks. That is the will of God in Christ Jesus concerning ourselves. God, we do that now. We are so grateful. For all of your goodness. So, that is the will of God in Christ Jesus concerning ourselves. God, we thank you for our county commissioners. We thank you, Lord God. We magnify you for your mercies. To ensure the welfare of our community. God, we pray tonight, Jesus, by our side. We thank you, Lord God. Accept all the treasures of wisdom and knowledge. God, we put into man. We pray tonight, Jesus, in Christ, to our head. We pray that that wisdom flows through this house. God, we know God that you're able to do exceeding abundantly about anything that we ask for things. So, we trust through this house. God, to grant us the wisdom that is necessary. Exceeding abundantly about anything that we ask for things. So, we trust you tonight, God, to grant us the wisdom that is necessary. God, we speak the blessings of the Lord. The favor of our God. So, again, for everyone that takes each of these. We pray, God, for wisdom. God, we pray for integrity. The favor of our God. That the whole of Randolph County be impacted by what's shared here tonight. We pray, God, for integrity and the mighty. That the whole of Randolph County be impacted by what's shared here tonight.
Thank you.
In the mighty name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. We had a couple of special recognitions tonight. One of those Lieutenant Stocker. How they make it. We had a couple of special recognitions tonight. Thirty years of service. One of those Lieutenant Stocker. Linda Smith is retiring from her information technology. And we're going to ask Linda Smith and Jeff Mullins to come forward. Our information technology. And I want to ask the commissioners to please join us out front right here. To do the presentation. And I want to ask all the commissioners to please join us out front right here.
Good evening, commissioners and board members. It's an honor and a privilege to come before you as we recognize Linda Smith. Good evening, commissioners and board members. It's an honor and a privilege to come before you as we recognize Linda Smith. Linda started her thirty-six year career with Randolph County Tax Department. Called G.I.S. or geographical information system. She was introduced to a new transition system. Computer service. Called G.I.S. or geographical information system. She sent transition over to the computer services. She showed a true love dedication to the G.I.S. system. As well as Randolph County. She took this critical system from its dedication to the G.I.S. system. As well as Randolph County. She took this critical system from its intensity to what it is today. And we all know. We got the great G.I.S. I only worked with Linda for about five years before her retirement. But I can wholeheartedly say that anybody who worked with Linda for about five years before her retirement. But I can wholeheartedly say that I wish nothing but the best for Linda and her family. It's truly one of the new chapter of her life. And I wish nothing but the best for Linda and her family. Linda was in the application system of her life. I T department. And I'd like to introduce Jeff Mullins. Jeff was in the applications division with the I T department. Twenty-eight years. And I'd like to introduce Jeff Mullins. And he's got some things that he would like to share from their time of work together. And he's got some things that he would like to share from their time of work together.
Thank you. I think the part of my most vivid memory of Linda was a little story that she told me one time. It was her oldest. Anyway, Linda Stephanie wanted to know what I did. And I said, every time I go in there. Anyway, Stephanie, you know what I did. I did it all. And I said, every time I go in there. I met Linda on February 8th. I did it all. I remember that day. I was, it was my first day in Randolph County. I met Linda on January 4th. On that 8th, in my twenty-five. I remember that day because we worked together the next 28 years. About that time, I was in Randolph County. Twenty-eight years of hard time. Trying to convince the few minutes that I had. I believe, though, three things. Three things. Trying to convince the few minutes that I had. That's what I would call stick to it. I believe, though, three things. You've got to have it. It's something about a person. Well, I would call stick to it. Six years. She's been in Randolph County for thirty-six years. She's been in Randolph County. G.I.S. group. G.I.S. initiative. Running on a single server. Thirty-six years of Randolph County. G.I.S. group. Which now takes eight servers. Running on a single server. Some examples of G.I.S. To a critical enterprise system. Which is verified addresses. And determine responding agents. Some examples of G.I.S. When you call 911, you have to interact with G.I.S. Verify addresses. Determine responding agents. And then we'll eventually determine. When you call 911, you have to interact with G.I.S. Elections uses it. Taxes uses it for parcels. Environmental health determines permitting sub存在. Elections uses it with districts. Taxes uses it for parcels. Environmental health uses it for permitting sub存在. G.I.S. group. One thing remains constant. It's used across the board in Randolph County. Linda would say that it was just not her. The G.I.S. group, one thing remains constant. And she's right. It's Linda. But at the end of the day. Linda would say that it was just not her. When someone had an issue with G.I.S. Linda was the one you talked. And she's right. Finding someone who does this distinctitude. When someone had an issue with G.I.S. Linda was the one you talked. Even as one is challenging as G.I.S. For thirty-six years. This is distinctitude. Do the same job. Certainly appreciate you. Even as one is challenging as G.I.S. Related to having two years. Linda's commitment to excellence. Certainly appreciate you. When I became an application manager in twenty-eight. Related to the projects we did with GeoVal. Linda's commitment to excellence. This is a feature of the public safety software. After twenty-eight years. Enter the first G.I.S. we did. This is a feature of the public safety software. Where the seven twenty-five route entered from G.I.S. And still her saying, that ain't right. On the first address we tested. The seven twenty-five route. As it turned out, the public safety software. I can still hear her saying, that ain't right. This configuration. As it turned out, the public safety software. Said to use the road center line. Not the other one. This configuration calls. We see another problem. First project is the excellence there and upon conversion to next year 911. As part of that conversion. We see another. Linda sent me the first walk they reported the day being submitted to G.I.S. As part of that conversion. In this, you'll see a lot of red. Linda sent me the first walk they reported the day being submitted to G.I.S. But what you'll also see in that red. In this, you'll see a lot of red. We had no critical issues. These are critical problems. In our match rate. But what you'll also see. Ninety-six to a hundred percent. Zero. This is an amazing accomplishment considering. In our match rate. Ranges from ninety-six to a hundred percent. Then finally, I'd like to just mention her. This is an amazing accomplishment considering. When central permitting implemented a new software solution from Tyler Technologies. Finally, I'd like to just mention. This new world systems. It became clear that the software did not produce a printed Tyler Technologies. With all the data on this new world systems. It became clear that the software did not produce. It became clear that we would have to implement a different type of technology. Which required us to implement fifty plus permits. It became clear that we would have to implement a different type of technology. It was an all hands on deck situation. Which required us to implement fifty plus permits. He wrote reports. The project manager. It was an all hands on deck situation. Wrote reports. The then IT director, Mike Rowland. He wrote reports. Wrote reports. The project manager. She was a G.I.S. analyst. Wrote reports. But yes, she learned the technology that we had to use. And she kept up with it. She was a G.I.S. analyst. But yes, she learned the technology that we had to use. And she kept up with G.I.S. So, Linda. Thank you for your thirty-six years. It's just one example of how she would step into. So, Linda. Thank you for your thirty-six years. Thank you. 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 That's a great benefit to this county that will live longer than any of us. And it saved many lives and benefits. We're so grateful for Linda being a part of that. And has saved many lives in that process. And recognition of thirty-six years of service. Since December the fifth, two thousand twenty-three. By Randolph County Board of Commissioners. And recognition of thirty-six years of service. September the fifth, two thousand twenty-three. By Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Proud of you. God bless you. There aren't many of these things that are handed out either. And it's only given to people who have accomplished. And handed out to public and benefited others. And it's only given to people who have accomplished. And benefited public and benefited others. Floyd Cooper Governor. It is the state of North Carolina. The President's special confidence in the integrity. Learning and seal of Linda R. Smith. Due by the President's special confidence in the integrity. Learning and seal of Linda R. Smith. With the rank of Ambassador Ex-Ordinary. Privilege to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order. Among which is a special privilege to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order. Among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast. In select companies. Anywhere in the world. Where the wheat grows strong. And the strong grow great. Here's to down home. The old North State. Very deserved, Linda. Where the wheat grows strong. And the strong grow great. Here's to down home. The old North State. Very deserved, Linda. Congratulations. Great job. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Take pictures. Come on, take a picture. Congratulations. Thank you. Take pictures.
I do not have coordination. Sure. I do not have coordination. Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. 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 Come on, take a picture.
I do not have coordination. Sure. I do not have coordination. Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. 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 And in addition to RJ and Jeff. And Michael Rowland's name was mentioned in that presentation. But RJ and Jeff did so much also in this process. And that presentation. He was very faithful, long time. Always did so much also in this process. And this county benefits from all his work. For all his years. Always up to the past. And this county benefits. The I.T. in this county is amazing. For all his years. I'm involved around David and others. The I.T. in this county is amazing. Nobody can match. I'm involved around David and others. The I.T. system that we have here. The information system that we have. Nobody can match all. And it's helped us to do things and overcome. Information system that we have. Through some difficult circumstances. But very important. And all these folks. They do that every day. When you walk down there and see. What all's in there. Very important. And all these folks. They do that every day. And we thank them always for making that possible. It's amazing. Okay, we have our public comment period. And we thank them always for making that possible. Okay, we have our public comment period. Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period is as follows. The public comment period will be limited to fifteen minutes. Two speakers. The rules of procedure for the public comment period will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally. And not to one individual commissioner. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comment will be directed to the board as a whole. And not to one individual commissioner. Will be at the discretion of the board. Discussion. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. And speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office. Or matters in current or anticipated litigation. All right. Do we have any speakers?
Tina Von Cannon. And I'm also here with my husband Tyler. I recognize a lot of places here. I have lived in Ashboro. And I'm also with my husband Tyler. But I live here because I recently spoke at the Ashboro City Council meeting. And so I want to make sure we were in front of you all as well. Because the issues that we're experiencing at our resident, which is 258 Lawrence Drive, which is homelessness and homelessness. We are here to represent us as citizens of the county. And we are here to represent as well. So we've had lots of issues. I'm not going to go over all of them that we've already talked about at the city. But so we've had lots of issues. I've had to post signs that we've already talked about at the city to make sure that, you know, people are not going to trespass. We've had to post signs. We've had to, you know, have to make sure that, you know, people are not going to trespass. We've had to call down. Our safety has really, you know, have had people taken off their property. We've had a big cameras. Our safety has always been monitoring to make sure there's no activity. We've had a big cameras on the front of our houses, always monitoring to make sure there's no activity. I mean, we have a creek that runs out behind our house, which is, I think, been considered before for a greenway, but that has now turned into a greenway for the homeless people to walk down to get to their, to their home. So anyway, we, we have, you know, been there for 18 years. We raised our burrows there. We always felt very safe in this, where we lived. Before, we had lived out in the county and always felt safe, but now we're at a point where we just don't. I mean, I've even, you know, done concealed carry and I carry my pistol firearm and going out at night. And I don't think, as a woman, I should have to do that, but I do because I'm afraid. I have neighbors that have young children. My children used to get on the creek during the day and I've never worried about their safety, but now I do because we've seen people walk up and down that property. We do have the understanding that since our, since the August 10th meeting, that you all have had a joint meeting with the city. And I wanted to thank you so much for that. I don't know, you know, as far as what your plans are. I do know that I have done a lot of research. I've been a nurse for 32 years in this county, but I've done a lot of research on the homelessness too and different initiatives that other cities have done. And I know there are things that can be done. So I just want to make sure that our county is being proactive, that we're preserving, you know, the, what we have here, the hospitality, the safety. You know, when we walk downtown, we see all the homeless people, we just passed one coming in here, laying on the street. I mean, my biggest concern about where I live is that these people, we don't know who they are. You know who I am because you know where I live and you know my address and you know my name, but these people out in the woods who are occupying a home, which it's, you know, a tent, but they're still occupying a home, you don't know who they are. So if they come on my property, I mean, we don't know. Have we vetted all these people? Do we know who they are? I think that's important, just like this guy laying up here on the, you know, at the gas station in the sun. Do we even know he's okay? You know, are we being proactive in our homelessness and drug issues? I just wanted to make sure our voice is heard, that we are concerned, you know, we want to be a part of the solution. I know what the drug problem, you know, can be in this county because we've dealt with it in my own family, so I'm not ignorant to that at all.
Ms. Van Cannon, that's, that's your time.
Okay, so that's all. I want to make sure it was heard. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all for listening.
And yes, we did, we did meet, not, not just the city and the county. We had all of our agencies there. We had some, some providers in the room. It was a room full to define the issue more. I think we all know what it is. I have a daughter and her family that lives out on West Lexington Road. She sends me pictures quite often. And we are working. And one of the things that's being done up in Archdale, we get a lot from High Point and from Greensboro, they're putting them in patrol car and taking them back where they came from. But there's more of them and come from far, too far away to do some of that, but, but those are just, that's just one of the things that we are doing and trying to identify the issue. We unfortunately, well, no, it's not. We have, we have facilities here like Denmark that come from outside our county for, for treatment. And when they get it, they leave. I mean, they stay here. They stay here. So, but we are working on those and how to address it. There's beaucoup of them. We don't have enough facilities to take care of it. So how, how do we? Some of the qualities you mentioned is what draws them here. They've, they've told us too cold in the north, it's too hot in Florida and south, so they like it here. I mean, tho- those things play a part, but, but we're, we're working with the police, the sheriff's department, all of our assets to alleviate this as much and as quickly as we can. I want you to know that, I want everybody to know that.
Can I speak one more thing?
Yes.
I do want to thank you because we do see the issues getting better. So, I mean, just in the last two weeks. So I will tell you, we have seen, I know my neighbor is also going to speak next, but we have seen things improve. And I thank you so much for that. I feel safer already.
Thank you. We'll say, we're, we're posting no trespassing signs. Private landowners can post no trespassing signs. That gives law enforcement a reason to act also. So we're, that's sort of a, that's sort of a camp, a campaign that's part of the process also. Thank you.
Michael Hayes.
Michael Hayes, 257 Lawrence Drive. I'm a neighbor of Tina's as well. And like I said, I want to reiterate, the actions y'all take have not gone unnoticed just in the last few weeks. And we really appreciate that. We've met as a, like a street and we've kind of addressed some concerns, so I wanted to thank you for that. With the sheriff's department, every time I've ever spoke to anyone with the Randolph County Sheriff's Department, they've been extremely professional and respectful and I can't thank them enough that they're doing a great job. I'd like to just bring the concern though because, you know, it's kind of a city-county kind of problem. We, our property is right on, I own, right on the county line, in the city line. And I own property right behind our pro, our house and their neighborhood that butts straight up to it. So there's a gray area there and sometimes I find that law enforcement may have a little bit of like hesitation of the understandings of what we can do. And even as a property owner, I really don't understand what I can do. We put up posted signs and things like that. My, my main concern is just, you know, keeping people, you know, thanking you for what you're doing and the purpose of it was, it's not been unnoticed. Please keep moving forward with that. The main concern that I have coming into the fall and the winter is as we just get, things get dried out. We've seen what's happened in Maui, which was terrible. There, we've seen fires and things like this being set in the woods. We have a lot of residential homes that border these areas. So as many ordinances or laws that we already have in place that, you know, we can empower law enforcement, I'd ask you to kind of keep, you know, that in mind. And if there's anything that needs to be, you know, reassessed or addressed, I'd, I'd ask you just to look at, into that as well. But thanks for all you do. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I know you speak for a lot of folks too, that you don't know about. I mean, it's an issue. We hear it and we're working. All right. Next is our consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the commissioner would like to pull out to handle separately? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to move the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And they are approved. Next is our new business. This Navigator program, David's going to do the intros here.
I'm going to allow Hope to do that since she was championing this project from the time that it was a strategic project with our strategic planning, also through the partnership of children. So it's grown from that into award-winning program on multiple levels. So Hope, if you want to.
Okay, thank you.
Got it, Hope.
Thank you. So I'll have you come forward in just a minute, but the Randolph County Public Libraries' Community Navigator Program has received a 2023 Civic Excellence and Innovation Award from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. They were recognized last week, week before, at the annual conference. This award is given to, annually, to 10 successful programs in the state. And so from time to time, it's not uncommon for Randolph County to have a program that is recognized in this way. And so for this year, it is the Navigator Award. I'm particularly proud of this because as we came out of the pandemic, we saw the increase in drug use, the opioid epidemic was, you know, was getting worse, the number of children going into foster care had increased, we had children and families that were 25% at the poverty level. And so we knew that, we had to think outside the box. And so when there were ARPA funds available, Lisa Hayworth got together with Ross Houston, sorry, I know Ross, Ross Holt, Ross Houston's a dear friend, but you're not Ross Houston, you're not him. She got together with Ross, they worked with Tracy Murphy at DSS, they worked with Tara Achor at Public Health, they put their heads together about what the issues were and how they could, what they could come up with that would be different and innovative. And if you have never thought about it, there are all these agencies that provide different kinds of care and resources. But to the average person who is facing hardships in their lives, they have no idea. I have people almost weekly to call and ask me, you know, I know somebody who's dealing with this, who do I call? The next week it'll be a different problem, who do I call? And you don't think about those things until you need them or until a friend of yours needs them. And then you think, hmm, where do I send them? Well, we don't want people who just need some resources, and there are resources available, to end up, you know, putting their children into foster care because they cannot provide for them and coming on the DSS radar or ending up on the radar for the sheriff's department when there are resources that are there. The idea was formed at that point in time for the navigators. And this program embeds social workers at the public libraries in Randolph County. So they have scheduled hours at each of the libraries, not just the main one, but at the others. So in essence, we are taking services through our navigators to our people in different parts of the county because one of the things that we heard the other day, you know, in this joint meeting to address homelessness, is that there is a huge lack of transportation in this area. If people don't have transportation, they can't get to work. So, so we take, we took the services out to where the people are with the, with the birth of this navigator program. So they are Angie Polito, Angie of Field Stand, Dana Nance, and then you all know Ross Holt, our library director. So if I could just give you some numbers here that I have put together, actually Ross put them together in the newsletter. Now, this was as of the newsletter time, and so they have changed even more since the newsletter went out. So these came from the newsletter. So if you think, oh, those are not right, well, they were then, Ross, because you put them out there. All right, since February of 2022, the navigators have helped 758 clients. So these are people that may have ended up, you know, try, without services because they didn't know where to go. Getting to DSS is very difficult. And then they have to go back to get whatever they can connect them with, if it's, you know, like the SNAP benefits or whatever. They've even been able to steer some veterans over to Veteran Services to connect them with benefits. But they have helped 758 clients. So that's in a year and a half. Of those, 575 adults and 212 children have been linked with services. You can't put people in housing if there's not housing out there. And that's another huge issue we're facing. So that's how many have actually been linked with services of some kind. They have moved 26 individuals into housing with four of them being children. 15 of the adults were living on the street or in their cars. So as we talk about the homeless issue, we have to have some kind of housing to put people into. Other needs range from food insecurity and medical matters to employment and transportation. Addiction, as you know, continues to be an underlying factor in about half of the request for assistance. The navigators have engaged with some 120 agencies, organizations, businesses, and individuals to refer or receive clients and coordinate services. These groups have come to rely on the navigators as much as the navigators rely on them. In a recent conversation with the staff at RCC, I was told that, they said, by the way, out of everything the county's doing, we cannot thank you enough for the navigator program. I said, the navigator program? How so? And at RCC, it, they have effectively used the navigators to connect students to services that have, would, that would have had to drop out of their program of study if it were not for getting, you know, these services. So RCC has turned to the navigators to help our, our students there. Ross Holt said it best in the most recent Randolph County Public Library newsletter. The number of community contacts demonstrates how multiple agencies can have one piece of someone's puzzle. So all these puzzle pieces can be out there and how hard it can be for the average person or for other organizations acting on behalf of that person to navigate a maze of agencies to find help and how valuable it is to have our navigators develop this expertise. So if you know someone who needs help and you don't have any idea where to send them, send them to the navigators and they will know where to send them. They're smiling because that's what they do. They have the training, they have the passion, they have the compassion, and they do their work well. So I'd like to come out and present them with this award. I might also mention that earlier in the summer, they received a national award from the National Association of Counties, and it was a high achievement award. So let me come out and make this presentation. So thank you for the work you do and thank you Randolph County Commissioners for funding this program in a leap of faith. There you go. I'm hooked to this microphone here. Hold on. Let me put it, I don't have a pocket. So thank you. Okay, I got to get a handshake.
I would like to mention Leanne Alock with the Local Government Credit Union. Leanne, we're on. The Local Government Credit Union sponsors this innovation award that the association does every year. And I just wanted to recognize her for coming from Clemmons tonight to, to be with us and for this award and all the awards that the Local Government Credit Union does for counties. Thank you very much. Our next item is another recognition. Leah Gerhart, who is our new strategic program coordinator and presenting tonight, is Jason King. Now Jason works for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in Raleigh. But Jason is a graduate of Trinity High School, my alma mater, and his folks, his parents and his family lives in Kenwood up on Archdale Road in, in, actually the address is in Trinity, I believe, Jason. But he got to come home today and see mom and dad and all the family, so he's right at home and we're glad to have you with us today, Jason. Appreciate it.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And yes, I did, she did feed me, so it's always good to come home and have a meal with mom. Of course, it's always great to come and celebrate a success story and I want to start and just say thank you to, to the board for working with this on this program. Over the past few years, we've all experienced this congruence in North Carolina, these two different funding streams that are coming to county governments through the American Rescue Plan Act and then through the National Opioid Settlements. These are funds that can and are making a difference at the local level. However, each funding stream comes with a burden on county administration and finance offices due to the strict compliance and reporting measures that come along with those funds. And the additional workload, workload to county staffs really came at a time coming out of the pandemic when counties were experiencing turnover due to burnout and retirements, even more so than usual, and those who were happening in key positions and in key departments across the state. So at the association, we saw this need to provide capacity assistance to counties to help mitigate the additional workload due to the funds. And then at the same time, we wanted to provide a bridge into county government for recent MPA graduates who were indicating an interest in public service through local government. So as part of a new membership services department at the association, we hired a cohort of recent masters of public administration, public affairs graduates. We trained them on ARPA guidelines, federal uniform guidance, and opioid settlement funds in terms of the allowed uses and then regulations. And then we also surrounded them with our staff experts at the association and set out to help them begin to gain a better understanding of county government operations. And then we went out and we looked for county governments, county governments to provide a setting for real-world experience and coaching and mentoring. And Leah Gerhart was among those first eight strategic project coordinators that we hired at the association. She joined our staff in June 2022. And we were fortunate to find this wonderful partner in Gray County for her to work with here in Randolph. In July, of course, the county hired Leah away from us, which sounds a little bit weird that we're happy about that, but that's exactly the point of the program. We're out, we're trying to make connections for, for young professionals to come into counties, get them that experience, and then hopefully provide a long-term employee for young. So that's exactly the outcome that we're looking for here. And to help the county with its immediate needs in terms of capacity, of course, provide the county with this potential long-term employee and then make sure that that employee, whether they're with the association now or with the county, they have these strong ties to the professional supports and peer-level supports through the association. So tonight, I'm just here to thank the board of commissioners, here to thank county manager Hal Johnson and staff in Randolph County, including Assistant Health Director Jennifer Layton, for helping turn this vision into a reality. So thank you. I do have a plaque to present to, to commemorate her, her membership to the cohort. And so I would like to ask her to come forward real quick and make her happy. So thank you, Leah. It's been great working with you and congratulations on behalf of the association. We look forward to staying connected with you now and forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
So I have a question. I have a question. So will your name still be Gerhart next week?
Listen, there's a lot of paperwork. I've heard a navigator could help me through all the stuff I have to do.
She's getting married next weekend, so.
Yes, I'm getting married this Saturday, actually. Yes, thank you.
All right.
I won't have the chance to look.
So, so Leah's been with us for a year, so she knew what she was getting into when she agreed to come to work as a full-time employee with the county, but, but her knowledge and her background has been immeasurable. She has former county experience in Forsyth County, and she was one of the first hires at the association, and we got to pick of the litter, so we're glad to have her. And, and her in-laws to be this week are actually Randolph County residents. They live in Sophia. So she has ties to the county as well, which all these things, I think, play together to, to help make our county stronger and keep us squared up and moving ahead. So glad to have you, Leah. Jason, thanks for coming up today. Okay, next item is our public safety market analysis. William's going to lead us off here. And Jill.
Thanks for allowing me to be before you this evening. Tonight, we're going, we're here to present the results of a market study performed by the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. This study looked at pressure point positions in the area related to public safety and public health. On the screen here, you can see a list of the 16 organizations that were included in the market study. This list includes both county and municipal organizations within our region. Here, we're looking at each of the positions and where they are in comparison to the market. The study looked at both starting salaries identified in the first column as market entry and average salaries identified in the second column as market average. Just a quick example, we'll take deputy sheriff on top. Being 100% of market entry means that our starting salaries for our deputy sheriffs are exactly the average of all the starting share, salaries for deputy sheriffs within our region, within the, the study group. For market average, our, the average of all of our deputy sheriff's salaries together are 3% higher than all of the other deputy sheriffs within the market study. Just a quick example. After analyzing the data, it was apparent that both starting salaries and average salaries for these positions are on the lower end of the market average and in some cases below the market average. So the question becomes, how do we address these issues? For starting salaries, staff is recommending reclassifying many of the hardest-to-fill positions, which tend to be our entry-level positions, deputy sheriff, detention officer By doing this and reclassifying these positions, one pay grade, it will enable departments to stay competitive when hiring within our market. The, the next thing to look at is average salaries. When analyzing the data, it became very apparent that many of our experienced employees were falling behind their peers in other organizations and in other jurisdictions. To accommodate this and to try to make up this gap, the staff's recommendation is to provide employees with six to nine years of service with a two-step or 2% pay increase, provide employees with 10 or more years of service, a four-step or a 4% increase, and other impacted employees receive a 1% or one-step increase. The purpose of this would be to increase the salaries of more senior staff, to be more competitive with the market and help us retain that experience. We know how expensive it can be to lose experienced staff and we want to do everything we can to retain them. And also, this will help reduce compression throughout the departments. As we raise the starting salaries for some of these positions, it puts a lot of compression and pressure on the salaries of certain seasoned staff. So we want to help relieve some of that compression. Tonight, staff is requesting the approval of the attached budget amendment in the amount of $446,000, $446,309 to fund these recommendations. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Let me say this relative to this agenda item. We knew at, when we adopted our budget in June to be effective July 1st, that this study was underway. So included in our budget, we had already set aside a lump sum of money pending the outcome of the market study. I don't know how much y'all follow what's going on around us, but we're, we're losing deputies to the city of Ashboro, we're losing them to Roundman, we're losing them to Siler City. Same thing is happening in our EMS programs. We're losing good people that we trained, sent, sent to basic law enforcement, whatever. We're losing good people that we trained, sent to basic law enforcement, whatever's required to prepare them for the job. Somebody else comes along and it becomes a money issue. Don't want to get too far in this, but that's, and I think that's expected. That shows up a lot in the younger employees who may just have started a family, they need the income, they want to have children, et cetera. Our long-term employees have been, I think, pretty loyal to the county in their positions. I think our division, our supervisors would agree with that. So that money was budgeted, and this report, as William has noted, $446,309 total. $377,625 of that goes to the Sheriff's Department. And $33,186 goes to building inspections, $35,498 goes to public health. And we also covered pay increases for employees at the June 30 or the July 1 budget also. So we're trying to address that, we're trying to be competitive, and we want to show our employees our appreciation and all the things that we take for granted, these employees make possible in this county. And we're appreciative of that, and this is our second market study in the past year, which dealt with some of the other areas of the county, some of the other departments. So that's sort of how we got to this point and where we are, and the budget amendment today will distribute the money that we set aside effective July 1. So any comments or questions from Commissioners? Hearing none? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the motion to approve the public safety reclassifications and increases as presented in the amount of $446,309 and to approve the associated budget amendment.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor of the motion, let it be normal saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, William. Thank you, Jill, for your work on this. Okay, our next item is one that's very familiar with everybody, and hopefully, we're going to move forward with this issue tonight. This is our Farm, Food, and Family Education Center. Kenny Sharon, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us to come and present this to you today. This is a result of many, many hours spent with community stakeholders together, putting together a plan for this Farm, Food, and Family Education Center. I think there's a perception out there that this center is for agriculture, and yes, it will benefit agriculture, but this is for the community also. Many of the projects that are done in part of the county's portfolio, this project has the ability to benefit many residents in Randolph County. And I'm talking, when I say benefit, economic benefit. There's going to be a food hub, which people can sell products coming from their gardens in the food hub. They can add income to their hobby. They can come and use the commercial shared-use kitchen to develop products and to sell products, food products. They can learn digital skills to increase their income by increasing their responsibilities at work and their abilities at work. So this center is not just an agriculture center, it's a center for the community, and so I appreciate all the support you've shown us thus far and hope to continue that after this evening. I think Paxton and Kristen and Daniel are going to come now. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that Daniel Jinks and Kristen Hess are here too. They're architects of the project. They're here to back me up in case there's any final questions that come up. Review the results of the bids. First, I want to give you a little background on the project real quick before I get into the bid numbers. This is the site plan. You can see this on Highway 64. It's in between where Salisbury Road and Vista Parkway. To the side is the Toyota dealership, and across the street is the Jeep dealership and the Sabre Lot flooring. The red lines on the drawing, that is the property lines. The yellow area is the limits of disturbance, and the green blocks are the main buildings. And the main three's, I want to show this, was sort of show the buffers that are available there between the residential areas, a large on the back and a good-sized one on the east. Here is the actual site plan from the drawings. Out closest to the road is the resource center, and farther back in the property is the arena and civic at the center. Here's the resource center. This has offices, classrooms, meeting space, commercial kitchen, and food hub. Here's the arena and event center. The area at the top is the arena and animal staging areas. There's open walls with dirt floor. At the bottom is the event center. It's enclosed, heated, cooled, has concession standing restrooms. Next, I want to get into the bid, but first, I want to talk a little bit about the alternates that were included. Throughout the design process, we stayed slightly over budget. So all the way up to the end, we were looking at ways to cut, and so these are some of the ways going into the bidding process that would give us some flexibility. Alternate one is a generator upgrade. The base bid had a generator that was sized large enough to run the life safety systems for the arena. So base bid, or alternate one, was to upgrade that to run the whole building so it could be used as an emergency shelter, and it also adds a small generator at the resource center for the coolers so that if the power outage, the food wouldn't go bad. Alternate two is additional site plannings. We'd made some cuts with the landscape plan farther back in the project and removed some of the trees, put them in as an alternate. Alternate three is a second commercial kitchen. It was designed to have two commercial kitchens so people could cook at the same time. They have to be separated by regulations, so the base bid included the one kitchen, and the alternate three was the second kitchen. Alternate four was the pasture fencing. We knew we planned to clear the pasture areas, but we thought we could hold off on the fencing and possibly budget it down the road. And then the last one is alternate five. This has actually reduced the site scope. This has cut back on some of the pasture and orchard areas. And right, this was like a last-minute change, and as we put it out for bid, we heard from the civil engineer that if we did this, we would have to redesign the erosion control plan and get it re-permitted. So I'm not recommending that we take this alternate. Not only would it reduce the savings, but it would also delay the project because of having to go through permitting again. In addition to the main alternates, we also had a few preferred alternates. Typically, when architects design or bid a project, they have to have multiple manufacturers so there's competition. However, there is an allowance that a property owner or owner, building owner, can have specific manufacturers if it helps them. So in this case, alternate one is Hoffman HVAC controls. This is the system that maintenance already uses. It works well for them, and they would really like to have one system and not have to have multiple control systems. Alternate B is a fire light, fire alarm. This is by Honeywell. Some manufacturer fire alarm systems will give you a really good starting deal, and they plan to make their money later once you're servicing.
Once you're hooked.
Yeah. And so they've had good results, maintenance has good results with fire light. They're pretty reasonable on the front end and through maintenance. And then alternate C is Carrier HVAC units. Once again, maintenance has had some issues here lately with some of the manufacturers having problems, warranty recalls. They've always had good results with Carrier, so we had put them as an alternate. These are actual numbers. I know it's hard to see these, a little busy. I do have a summary in the next slide and also have hard copies if you want them. The main thing I want to point out here was on the bottom, the alternates, preferred alternates, A, B, and C. Preferred alternate B was zero change for the fire alarm system. They didn't charge us anymore. And preferred alternate C, we only had one bid come in. Most of the contractors left this blank. I think they had a hard time getting numbers from Carrier, but we hope to negotiate this with the contractor once we're underway.
Was that a delivery issue?
I'm not sure. It's probably just timing. They just had a hard time getting those numbers from Carrier. So here's a summary of the bids. You can see we had four contractors submit bids. The low bid was Holden Building Company. The base bid was $29,915, I'm sorry, $29,915,000. Alternates one through four was $955,136. And I put preferred alternate A through C, but actually, this is just alternate A, was $43,800, bringing the total to $28,913,936. The next lowest bidder was Montith Construction. They were within 2%, or less than 2% of Holden Building Company, so we were happy with the spread. However, we're not real happy with the amounts. Here you can see the cost estimates through design and the horizontal center row where it says construction total. You can see that that number fluctuated right around 23.5 million. Based off of that, the bids came in approximately $5 million over budget. Normally, that's a non-starter. However, in this case, we did have $4 million that was coming back to the county from some other state funds, and Will Massey has put together a budget to show you how the project can move forward using those funds. Before, I turned it over to Will, though I did want to tell you that we're doing some other stuff. We are doing some value engineering. Daniel had reached out to the contractor right that evening after the bids and asked them to look for ways to cut. They had a really good response. They reached out to their subcontractors, and they've already given us over two pages of potential cost savings. We have to review those with the architect and engineers to make sure that, you know, they're acceptable, but I was very pleased with their response. Little bit on the schedule. If we can, if it's approved tonight and we can do contracts this month, hopefully, it would start in early October with 64 weeks of construction. That would put us ending at the end of 2024 and hopefully moving in in the first quarter of 2025. Little bit about Holden Building Company. They are Greensboro, I mean, they are located in Greensboro. I've never worked with them specifically. I have heard of them over the years. Their owner's been licensed since 1998. Couple of projects that were similar that I saw that they did, they did a High Point Readiness Building, which has offices, classrooms, and kitchen, very similar. They also did the Rowan County 911 Center and the Greensboro National Guard addition and renovation. With that, I'll turn it over to Will.
Thank you. First of all, I'll go over the total project costs. We have architect fees, 3.5, other services. Paxton's come up with some estimates for furniture and technology. You have the construction budget, 28,922,918. That has a little bit extra in there because there's permits and things beyond just the construction bid. We had cost of issuance, and then the current budget has 177,82 of contingency. So from the beginning, this is total project cost, 35,136,200. So now, I'll go over to the project financing. We have had several state capital infrastructure fund grants of 1,800, 18,400. Department of Commerce grant of 900,000. We have donations for waste management way back to start this project. We issued debt of $4 million through RMC, 0% interest. And then we've made transfers in general fund of 5,250,000. All that's already in the project. What we had not budgeted was anything for interest earnings or sales tax refunds. And once we budgeted reasonable amounts for that, we're left with about a $4 million deficit. And as was mentioned, state grant, Kenny Sharon has applied for a couple of other grants. A lot of this is being tied up because the state has not adopted their budget yet. So rather than wait, I think, in conversations with the Sharon Vice Chair last week, to move the project forward, we can use capital reserve funds and see how these grants shake out over the next month or so. So that's the recommendation. There's a budget amendment to make that transfer. So for action items for the board this evening, first of all, would be to approve the construction bid, including alternates one through four and the preferred alternate to the low bidder, Holden Building Company for 28,913,936. And then approve the budget, project amendment number eight, to increase the total project budget to 35,136,200. And that will allow this project to move forward.
This has been a long process. There's several out there in the audience tonight that's been here from day one with this process. We've had some highs and lows and disappointments along the way, but I think we're close to seeing this through. Mr. Allen has been right there through the whole thing with it, and to this point, you know, we started this back before the pandemic, and things really got out of hand there for a while, too much commercial. And I think some of the things that was put into originally will follow this ag center here by private companies who want to be a part of what's going on here. I think this will be a draw for the county going forward. And we've had one project in particular where we've had some, I don't want to say excess funds, but some funds over what was needed at the time, and that's pretty much what's going to cover this until we know more specifics about the value engineering process that's going through, see if we get some more out of it. So that's where we are. David, you got something you want to say?
Well, I was a young man when this thing started. And so, and I went on the big, on the front end of it, but I guess the question Paxton is, naturally, the big question is, and this may be for Kristen and Daniel, is the difference in the estimated cost and the bid cost. What's kind of driving that? I know we got outside because of the Balfour Building. We were going to see some savings there, well below the cost estimate, and we were hopeful that we'd see the same thing here, but can you enlighten us a little bit on?
We think probably the biggest factor is the site costs. We do have rock on the site. It's a big site, and there was some concern from the contractors about bidding it. Actually, the way Daniel and Kristen had bid it, we had an allowance for rock, which to me, that gives protection to the contractor. But they had several grading contractors that came back and asked to take those out and just put it in the base bid, and so that's what we did. And now, you know, we wonder if maybe that was the best thing we may have, should have left them in, but we had the larger contractors requesting that we handled it that way.
I know the site, once you grade it, you need to grade it to the size that you're going to, it's not, well, let's just do a bit of it and then we'll grade the rest of it later. It's not that kind of progression. You've got to do all at the same time, so.
Early on, that was one of the cost savings. We actually, they redesigned the civil package to try to make it more balanced with the cut and fill so that it, you know, we hopefully won't hit too much rock and won't have to haul much dirt off-site.
Right. I guess the other thing in the value engineering, I guess, if we proceed tonight, how does that impact your ability to potentially see some cost savings below what we're approving
Well, like I said, they've already given us a whole, over two pages of potential savings. We'll just have to review them in detail to make sure that they don't, you know, change something else or leave us with a project that, you know, we're not going to be happy with.
Right.
The way I see it, I think with Commissioners, is if you approve it at the request, then that would cover anything we do, and every bit of savings we have could then be rolled over into contingency, and then if we'd have something else come up, we would have, you know, some funds for that.
Right. Because I know it's a contingency for a project this size, it's awfully, awfully low.
Yeah.
It's been a long road. I know HH has been with us for most of that road. We've had some- some ups and downs. So, I mean, I'm excited about to get this thing started. And, and the fundraising is not over. I know Kenny's been working, Kenny Sharon's been working on grants. And, you know, there are some potential sponsorships and naming rights and all those kinds of things that we really hadn't explored yet. So there is some possibilities to, you know, for additional funding to come in. So it's not like, okay, everything's gonna stop. We're good to go, and we're happy. We'll still look for, for those opportunities as they come, come along. So...
And the grants, I think Kenny's already been visited by the Tobago Trust Fund. And just the fact that they came and did a site visit and met with us was a good sign. So we have good hopes on that.
So I, I would like to just ask one question. I got a little confused in what's included and what's not with the alternates. So remind me what you said about the generator. Which size generator is included?
All of the generators are included. The, in the base bid, it's, it's just the bare bones, just what's needed for life safety at the arena. You have emergency lighting, and you have like fire pumps that have to run. So the, the base bid has a generator that will run those. The alternate one, that's the upgraded generator that would run the whole building so it could serve as an emergency shelter.
Okay.
And has a smaller generator for the resource center so that the coolers, you know, don't lose power and potentially is the...
Okay, excellent. So that's included in the bid?
In the base bid.
Excellent. Okay.
Other questions? Could, could, could we see the funding sources again? And there's a, a lot that have come from outside the county, a lot, to get those kind of grants. The, the state folks have, have come forth fairly strong, I think, in helping this project along. Yeah, that, that's due to the work of our former representative, Alan McNeil, who got those funds for us, that, that big number right there on the top. He, he got us that first big pot of money. The last three items on that list are the ones that Will came up with last week when we found out the bids were over. So that's where we made up the difference. Interest earning with interest rates going up, that's, that's a positive from it. We're getting a little more. And then our sales tax refunds. And then that bottom line is what we expect to have brought forward from the Balfour Building. But the big number there came from the state of North Carolina and the efforts of Alan McNeil.
And one point, that, the thirty-five million, that is total. That includes the original design fees back whenever this was a larger project. So...
You want to make a motion?
All right, Mr. Chairman, for really, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for the F three E C project to Holden Building Company in the amount of twenty-eight billion nine hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and approve the associated budget amendment and project ordinance amendment.
I would like the privilege to second that motion. Here, when it got started before, a little disappointment along the way. But, and I think the, the main thing about this is this, this final, or shows our commitment to this project going forward. And we will have an ag center out there on Highway sixty-four. And Kenny came along in the process. He's been invaluable to, to keep it going. Paxton, your work is, has been awesome. And that's not the only thing you've had to do either. Other comments or discussion from commissioners?
I, I will say, I'm glad to see that Kenny mentioned that the versatility of the, of the complex. And, and one of the things is, you know, it could be used as emergency shelter with a generator. So I'm glad to see, because of its location, it could be used for other things. Like I say, it's not just an ag center. It's an economic development driver. It's an emergency shelter staging area. And it's an area that I don't think the county, other than maybe this parking lot out here, has that size and ability to, you know, stage things in a disaster or emergency or whatnot. So, and its location is, you know, very desirable. I think we'll see a lot of use of the P C, the, the training center, also the arena, or meetings and those kinds of things. People come throughout the state. I'd, I'd love to move some of those beings from over in Chatham County, over in the, in Randolph County. We're a little bit further west, and maybe some friends up in the western Florida state might like that shorter drive. So, but I'm, I'm glad to see we got some folks that have been along the way as well. Some of the Volter Ag District, Farm Bureau, all those folks that have been, you know, the drivers behind this for the last probably close to twenty years.
Y'all wouldn't let us give up. Your encouragement was serious, serious. Your encouragement was good and, and made real believers out of us that this was a good thing for our county. HH, thank y'all. You went through it too, when we was going and then we wasn't, and now we are. And thank you for your patience also. Other comments or discussion? All right, those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Next is our, the needs-based grant for South Ashboro Middle School. Mr. Woody, Dr. Woody.
Good evening, Chairman Frye, members of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity tonight to present capital requests on behalf of the Ashboro City Schools Board of Education. I wanted to say, as I sat here tonight, and I've watched a lot of these presentations, and just thinking about how blessed I am to serve in this county and to serve as the superintendent of Ashboro City Schools, one of the things we've talked about a lot this school year, as we've kicked off a fantastic school year. We've had a great six days. And we've talked about one of our themes being excellent in innovation and doing things with excellence, doing the small things well, the big things well, and doing things with an innovative spirit and innovative mindset. And that's really, in a very simple way, making things better, making things better. So I am proud to stand before you tonight to serve with you. I appreciate your work as, as commissioners, the way you've supported our kids, our community, our school district. And one of the things that you do as board members, for the sake of the audience, if folks don't know or remember, you provide, you provide spaces. You provide buildings and facilities and structures and spaces for hope and for opportunity. So in that spirit, we are striving to be innovative. We strive, we're striving to be strategic and deliberate. And I think Commissioner Allen, you made some great comments tonight. And Commissioner McDowell, and certainly Mr. Massey, you've talked about some of these other presentations tonight and the creativity and the deliberate strategic thinking about pursuing grants, pursuing additional funding outside of Randolph County. And so one of the things I hope to talk to you about in the next few minutes are some of those kind of innovative opportunities that we plan to capitalize on in Ashboro City Schools. So this evening, talking specifically as we've planned, as we've worked through our ten-year plan, we're in year nine of our, of our ten-year facilities plan. And, you know, we, we just finished our renovation project for Ashboro High School. In that process, we continued to review the needs and priorities of all of our facilities across our school district. And now, with the exception of our high school, all of our buildings are at an average of about sixty years old. So as we've prioritized, even before pursuing some other opportunities, we prioritize what are our next needs? What are some of the areas that we need to be thinking about and strategically considering as we look at the age of our buildings and space and growth? You know, we're in an unprecedented, unprecedented time in Randolph County and Ashboro City Schools for, for growth potential. We can certainly talk about that more this evening. So the top of our priority list was South Ashboro Middle School. SAMs was built in nineteen sixty-two with an additional instructional space added in two thousand and one. The building has approximately ninety-seven thousand three hundred square feet. We do have some areas of concern as we consider South Ashboro Middle School. And we have some ADA accessibility challenges. I'll, I'll show you a picture here in a little bit of a need for an elevator. We have a lift piece. We have some needs with HVAC, some plumbing needs, electrical things, several areas of concern as we consider that. So we do have three floors, three floors of SAMs. A lot of folks don't know that. So it's a multi-level structure that has accessibility issues for students and staff and certainly visitors. So our plumbing, electric, electrical infrastructure also we're in need of updating. And one of the primary areas is our cafeteria space. So enhancing that creative space and also securing a main entrance area of the building. And I'm happy to show you what some of those, what some of those needs look like. So here's the great news, okay? The great, the great news is that we, we have been exploring an opportunity. And I mentioned this to you as commissioners back in February, about eight months ago, when we gathered together to talk about our, our budget and some of the requests that we were going to lift up, that we had heard some, some information out there that there was going to be a pretty significant needs-based capital improvement grant through North Carolina Public, Public, Department of Public Instruction. So that has indeed happened. It is a, a grant that is, includes new, new construction as well as renovation projects. So the grant does require a match from the county based on the North Carolina Department of Revenue assessed real estate value for each county. So counties that have an adjusted market value that is less than forty billion dollars are eligible to apply for this needs-based grant with a zero to thirty-five percent match. So in Randolph County, the current match required would be fifteen percent of any dollar amount that we pursue. So this is where it gets interesting. Will talked about this a few minutes ago. The grant window we've been expecting all along was, was to open up in July, certainly when, when the budget passed, but the budget has yet to pass. We hear some rumbling. I know I'm on social media right now. I shouldn't say this. We've heard a rumor, could be two weeks, maybe, maybe sooner. We'll see how that works out. We're, we're hopeful for a, a budget coming soon. But we went ahead and did some due diligence. We, we worked on our end, and we, we built some partnerships to try to do quite a bit of homework, to look at what this could look like if we pursue this opportunity. So the grant window, again, is expected to open up when the state budget's passed. And historically, it's been open for about thirty days with awards being announced the following month. I thought, sitting here in my seat this evening, I have no idea what other school districts are doing. I, I do know, as this process started, I, I heard information from other superintendents that a lot of them felt like, you know, maybe the juice wasn't worth the squeeze, that it's a lot of effort to put towards a potential grant application with no guarantee. I, we feel like in Ashboro City Schools, that was short sighted. You know, why not take a swing and go after opportunities? So we very much did that. So each application, according to the grant, is limited to one school campus project, and it's up to forty million dollars per school site. So here's the unique position as well. The grant application must be signed by the chairs of the local Board of Education tonight. I'm, I'm proud to have Mr. Cheek with us here as one of our board members. But certainly our, Michael Smith, our, our board chair, would need to sign that. And certainly the chair of the county commissioner, which would be you, Chairman Frye. So what, what did we do? What have we done? In order to prepare and submit a grant application, we worked a process to select partners who would help us with this process. And we selected a design build team consisting of Babbitt Construction and Brady Services. The design build team agreed to partner with Ashboro City Schools for a very nominal fee to establish preliminary designs and a budget to assist with the grant application. So tonight, I'm very proud to have Chad Danforth, Vice President of the Triad Division for Babbitt Construction, Bailey Allred, Architect with, with Babbitt Construction, and Mr. Kevin Lynn, Vertical Marketing Leader for Brady Services. And Chad and Kevin have led the efforts to date to help position Ashboro City Schools to be ready for this grant application. And they certainly are here tonight as I, I mean, keep moving through my presentation. If you have very specific or deliberate questions, I know they'd be happy to, to respond to any of your, your concerns or questions. Bob and Brady prepared a handout that you received that includes details, very, very clear details about the project, including pictures, rendering, scope of work, as well as budget estimates and a projected timeline. And I'll just kind of give you a couple broad strokes to what that looks like, and then certainly give you an opportunity to offer up questions, and then we can try to answer those things collectively. Now, in your handout, you see the details of the preliminary budget, which, which, based on estimates and doing quite a bit of, of surveying and considerations all throughout that building, the budget would total just over thirty-three million dollars. There are additional alternate items, furniture, some other things that would approximate two million dollars. And this would bring the total estimated project to around thirty-five million. With the total grant to thirty-five million and the fifteen percent match required would be about five point two million dollars from commissioners. In order to complete construction with minimal disruptions, the classroom spaces and learning, we would need to schedule construction work around one wing of the building at a time. So we would need to lease around six to eight mobile unit classrooms during the construction time. And we are estimating that cost at around six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Those, those costs would not be eligible to be included in, in the grant funding. So it's just important to kind of be aware of. Couple of things here, a couple renderings here to, to give you an idea. I don't know, well, commissioners, you've been in South Ashboro Middle School many times over the last couple of years. We've had a variety of meetings. Don't know about folks here in the public. Fantastic building. But there are some things that we could, we could do better in terms of safety, in terms of structural components. So one of the things is the main entrance, you would see on the left is the current, the current view of what this looks like, and a rendering on the right with some proposed changes. That would include an office space, some more security coming into the building. Currently, when you walk right into the building, you actually go, it feels like a hundred yards. I don't know if that's accurate or not. You go a good distance to get to the main office. So once you kind of breach the building, the media center's to your left as well, the eighth, eighth grade hallway, you actually can access quite a few classrooms before getting to the office area. This would change that significantly, in fact, radically change it. So coming into the building, you know, you would be greeted right at the office area with the main entrance. So this would minimize access to school once a visitor entered the building. I mentioned this earlier. We do, we have need for, for an elevator. We do currently have a chairlift. You see that on the left-hand side of this picture. And then the rendering would be what, what additional stairs and an elevator would look like as well to make sure...
Is that included in your...
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, that would, that would obviously enhance ADA compliance and make sure, again, student, staff, visitors had the access to all three levels of that building. Again, a, a really special component to this is enhancing our cafeteria. So we're able to seat around a hundred, eight hundred and eighty students at a time currently in our cafeteria. And we can accommodate that current population with three different lunch periods. But I think in order for us to prepare for growth, which we know is coming, and accessibility, and again, opportunities and meaningful spaces, you can see some additional, these are, these are both new renderings here of what this could look like to expand that space. You also see, if you look real close, there's an upstairs area, which would be kind of a, you know, a flexible learning space, space, both indoors and outdoors for students. Again, visiting Ashboro High School and Walker Commons, as we call it, you see how that has radically enhanced learn, the learning environment at Ashboro High School, because we have these flexible spaces with bistro tables and, and booths and opportunities for students to connect with one another and connect virtually and all kinds of things. So, so some very creative opportunities here that could, could radically enhance the look and the feel of South Ashboro Middle School. Additional areas under design review would be our HVA system, again, similar. I'm repeating myself a lot because I know you know this, commissioners. You were integrally, intimately involved with our high school project. It's very similar dynamic here in terms of HVAC, the plumbing, our electrical system, flooring and paint, window, windows, et cetera. So you can see, again, areas there that if we're blessed to have the opportunity to get this grant and move forward, these would be critical pieces that, again, would radically enhance South Ashboro Middle School, bring it up to, to code in many areas and certainly bring it up into, I don't even know what we call it anymore. Twenty-first century feels a little dated now, but bring it up to date, right, and opportunities for our young people. So our estimated timeline for construction renovations, our, our hope would be, if the budget, the state budget's passed soon, if you approve us moving forward with this grant, that we would submit this during, during the window. We, we feel like we have just as much of opportunity. In fact, we feel like we're in, in the best position possible for, for this part of the state to... state to get this kind of approval through, through DPI. And then you see, you see a timeline here. So potentially the grant can be awarded October, this October, design work November through October. Would take a, a good 12 months to complete all of that work. And then construction and renovation would take close to two years. So one of the things that may be helpful for the public to know, for, for you as commissioners as you process through this request, the grant funds are dispersed as expenses are incurred. So the 15% match is required along with the expenses. So the good thing about that, we're talking about $5.2 million, but we're talking about spending that over the life of about a three and a half year project. So it's, it's not, you know, again, it's all the same money, but sometimes that, that feels a little better, maybe going over a prolonged window of time. So really, in conclusion tonight, I could, I could talk at length about my thanks, our thanks, our collective thanksgiving and gratitude to you as commissioners for, quite frankly, the, the work that's been done at Ashboro High School, the work that you've supported all, all around our district for years and years and years, the creative, safe and engaging spaces, innovative spaces for all of our students. Those things have helped us to have a fantastic school year already. And we're very, very grateful that the partnership, the partnership we have with you, the Board of County Commissioners. So your unwavering support, response to our facility needs is absolutely essential to the success of our students. And again, we're thrilled with this opportunity that, that has come to us and we want to, we want to be good stewards. We want to be good shepherds of taxpayer resources, also to look at what kind of opportunities that we can create for all of our young people. And again, to be innovative and to make things better, not tomorrow or five or 10 years from now. We know, we know we've got to project for those things, but if we can do some things right now, we want to be on the cusp of that. So I will pause and certainly entertain any questions. I will welcome our partners and colleagues, Commissioners, if you have specific questions. And then I'll, I'll, I'll kind of wrap up with one last statement if that's okay.
Does it improve security?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Always with repair, refurbishing brings along the possibility of unknowns, but you think you've done a good job at identifying what the needs, the needs as, as best as you can renovating an existing building.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and again, we've, we've seen that at Ashboro High School. I wasn't planning to talk about it, but you're all where we had, we had, we had a potential, well, we had a threat Friday.
Yep.
And because of the security measures that were in place, first of all, the security measures with the building, but also our processes and procedures, and critical support from the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, I mean, it was, it was a very, very, very good exercise. It was not fun at the time, but it was a very good exercise to see what some of those measures look like in real inaction.
Yep.
And, and keeping folks who we don't want in the building, out of the building. And so we certainly have measures in place at every one of our locations, but the pieces we're talking about here at South Ashboro Middle would also enhance, enhance the, the safety measure.
This is a serious question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you think enhances the possibility of, of the grant by the fact that we just spent $55 million on Ashboro High School and we're one of very few counties in North Carolina that has two school systems?
Yes, sir. So my, my short answer, my really short answer is yes. I think what that, the first thing is, you know, the grant talks about new construction, but there seems to be a heavy emphasis on renovation. And I think we have already demonstrated with the partnership as a school district, also Randolph County, right? The renovations and the work that's been happening there in Randolph County School District and the partnership with the County Commissioners. I think that, that sends a very clear message that we're, we're also, we're about expansion and growth. We know those things are coming and instead of a slash and burn or just, I know, look, I don't have anything against building new buildings, but renovating existing spaces really are some of the critical pieces that I know folks along in Raleigh and all across the state are looking at. So I do believe, yes, Chairman Frye, I believe it's a good-
And if, if we vote to, to go forward, I, I think that's a likelihood, that also says we understand that we're going to have to have skin in the game too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, I think-
I think that's part of intent, the intent, intention, a little part of this process.
Yes, sir.
Comments, Commissioners?
I just wanted to know what the, what the current, current population is. At Sam's, 500 to 600 maybe?
Yeah, we're mid-500s. I've actually got it here in my stack if you want to do this.
No, that's okay. I knew you said 180 in three lunch periods, so.
I think we're around 560, somewhere in that, in that range.
Okay. All right. And what's the capacity of the school? Will this increase the capacity at all?
Yes, this would increase the capacity of the building. I can't tell you again, does anybody off the top of your head what we're, we have, I can tell you that we do have some, I, I, just from walking, cursory walking through, but we have some open classroom space, but it's very limited.
Sure.
But again, this kind of construction process opens up opportunities for, again, safety, again, more meaningful learning spaces, again, leveraging all those classroom spaces in a deeper way.
Sure, sure. I was just, as you talked about, thinking to the future and with growth over the next 10 years, then I just wanted to ask the question.
And the issue, other questions? Couple, a couple of things. The timeframe, again, from start to finish would be?
Yeah, so, I'm sorry. So, you know, again, here's, here's one of those elements of, of, I'm proud of the work we've done. I hope, I hope as, as commissioners, I know you honor this. I mean, one of the things, we, we wanted to be deliberate. So we went ahead and started moving forward with this piece of like, look, is this, is this even something that we want to pursue? So we are in a good place right now to submit the grant. So hoping to submit that grant in October. Design work's going to take about a year to, to have the entire schematic and all of those pieces, to look at what this will look like. And then construction would theoretically begin in, in January 2025, completion in 2020.
So you're talking about two years of-
Yeah.
-construction timeframe.
Yes, sir.
To get it done in that period of time. The other thing I'd like to, like to submit is the fact that if you're looking at this kind of thing, you're talking about asking for those funds, you're asking this board to be able to set forth 15% to match what the state or the, the state would, would be funding, which is, you're, you're saying to the citizens 15% and you're going to get the, the grants of 85%.
Right, right. I mean, it's, again, we haven't been awarded anything yet, but to me-
Sure.
-the juice is worth the squeeze. Like, you know, to say to the, to the average taxpayer here in our county, look, we're, we're getting, you know, 85% of this project is paid for outside of Randolph County.
Right.
And what a, what a tremendous blessing and opportunity.
That, that's what I'm saying, is that taxpayers need to understand that 85% is going to be from outside the county for us to be able to match up with. I'd like to be able to invest monies and things at those rates.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, sir.
Is there a timeline, a deadline for completing the use of the grant?
So I don't know that we, five years?
Five years?
Five years. That's a great question.
Is, I know since this is renovation and is this an all or nothing? Is it a partial grant or is it a, you get the whole 35 or you get nothing or is that a working base?
Yeah, I mean, excellent question. You know, we, to a large degree, Commissioner Allen, we, we're swinging for the fences, but I'm gonna let-
Right.
Yeah. Give it a listen.
Hi, my name is Kevin Lynn. I'm with Brady Services. So is your question, could the grant go up or is it that we're, we're targeting?
I'm being pessimist. Grant can come down. If enough, if there's not enough funding to go around and the state says, okay, we'll fund this project, you're going to get 50% of what you asked for, that kind of thing.
My understanding is that DPI funds the grant fully and if you don't get the grant, you get zero.
Okay.
They don't reduce the grant because that would put districts in a really difficult position to say, well, how do we cut a project in half when we funded it and designed it around a complete renovation?
Yeah, since it's renovation, it might be a little bit easier to cut things out. New construction, you wouldn't be able to do that.
That's right. But, but our understanding is that DPI will provide one grant value based on what is submitted if you're lucky enough to be selected.
Right. Do we know, I don't know if there's no budget yet, so we don't know how much is there and then-
Yeah.
-we're all just competing for these funds.
So to place some context, last year there was about $2 billion of requests for somewhere in the 300 to 600 million, if you count the two tranches of funding that were provided from DPI. Our understanding is that from DPI's perspective, only about a billion of that was well-considered applications. So it might be a school district said, I'll take the full 50 million for new high school, please, but without doing this level of investment and, and preparation for it. Because one of the most important things for DPI is the skin in the game, as you mentioned. And that's not just financial, that's also this investment upfront to prepare for these grant applications. So about a billion dollars of requests and then somewhere around 300 to 500 million dollars worth of funding. So I suspect we'll see something very similar this year. And, and what we're seeing is probably in the order of those several hundred million dollars worth because it's, this is an excellent way to bring funding out to-
Yeah.
-to counties across the state.
Sure.
That's not geared towards the largest ag spaces.
It's, I believe we're still a tier one county.
Yeah, I was going to say-
For right now.
Yep.
Does that play into the award process?
Absolutely, and it increases your likelihood of winning.
Yep. Yeah, I think we have some things in our favor.
I do believe so too.
Better do it quick. I was, I love how long it is.
That's right.
That's right.
That's, that's a treasure, Allen, I want to, I want to bottle up here.
All right.
So if, if there's no further questions, I guess, again, just tonight, we're, we're seeking approval to apply for this grant with the amount of 35 million. And really, we're asking for the authorization from Chairman Frye to, to be willing to sign that grant application. So thank you for time with me this evening.
Yes, so the issue before us is to approve applying for the grant.
Yes, sir.
And see if we get it.
Yes, sir.
Then we'll have other action to take when we get the money.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good questions. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund Grant and allow the chairman to sign any necessary documentation related to the grant application.
Have a second? I'll second that. Thank you. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. And it's approved.
Thank you so very much.
Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay. Our voluntary agricultural district ordinance update. Did Kenny come back? Amy, you going to do the?
Yeah, they, they asked me to present it.
Yeah, I think they're out there-
I think they are.
Celebrating.
I think they're out there celebrating.
Might better check, see what they're drinking out there.
I thought they got it, got a little too excited and just left me. But basically, there have been some recent changes to the North Carolina general statutes that authorize the county to have a voluntary ag district. And those changes require the amendment of our voluntary agricultural district ordinance so that we are in line with what the state requires. We advertised a public hearing on these amendments and most of the changes honestly reflect things that we're already doing anyway. For example, there's a requirement that advisory board members be chosen to the extent possible to represent all segments of agricultural production in the county. That has been a longstanding practice for, for this county. Now it's a legal requirement, so the ordinance just needs to be amended to reflect it. There are some other changes that similarly reflect practices already in place. There are really only two substantive changes. Previously, to qualify as a voluntary ag district, the property was required to be engaged in agriculture as defined in North Carolina general statute 106-581.1. Now to qualify, the property must be used for bona fide farm purposes as that term is defined in North Carolina general statute 106-743.4A and 160D-903. If you read those statutes, the change does not narrow the definition of properties that could be considered for a voluntary ag district. It actually expands it slightly by adding that it would include production, a bona fide farm definition expands that definition to include production of any non-farm product that the Department of Agriculture recognizes as a goodness grows in North Carolina product. And then the second substantive change is that now a, a landowner whose property is removed from a voluntary ag district or an enhanced voluntary ag district by the advisory board has a right of appeal to the Board of County Commissioners. Previously, the only right of appeal was if the advisory board denied an application. So those are the main changes. You should have a copy of the ordinance with the amended language redlined. The changes were presented to the voluntary ag district board and they unanimously recommended approval. So at the close of the public hearing on this, you can vote on whether or not to amend the ordinance as presented and I can try to answer any questions you might have.
So this, this has a little bit of history here. In a discussion of a, what is a bona fide farm, does that mean the state's going to come in and tell us whether or not it is?
No.
If we're in a process?
No, the bona fide farm definition is in the general statutes and it actually is very, is very similar to the previous definition, except that it has expanded that definition to include the goodness grows in North Carolina non-farm products. When you look at the two definitions, it has not narrowed the definition. Not, geez.
It's you.
I'll stop back and talk. I'm loud. Please say. Any, any other questions?
Other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I think I mentioned that before, is on the first page there, it takes out a, a phrase there. It's talking about the purpose and one, what was taken out was to, to increase protection from non-farm development.
That is a change that they made in the general statutes, but they made the change there in the wording. They didn't actually remove any of the protections that were previously in there.
Right.
So the same protections still exist, they just took that out of the wording of the purpose for some reason. Or they reworded the purpose.
One, one reason that, and Kenny Sharon, you correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, one reason that farmers get in this program is to protect their land from non-farm encroachment. And so, you know, it seemed to be odd to be taking that out of the purpose. I don't think it's a, a do or die kind of thing, but it just seemed odd.
Well, it is, it, it does seem odd to me as well that the General Assembly chose to reword that section, especially since they did not change the protections.
Right.
There, those, all of those, all of the previous protections are still in place. So I'm not sure where they were rolling with the rewording. I'm, I'm not sure. They did add something about nuisance actions and I wonder if that was really what their intent was to make sure that they wanted something in here about decreasing the likelihood of nuisance actions where people move to a farming area and then say, oh, it smells bad here or something like that. So it, it seems like they wanted to underscore that. I'm not sure why they removed the other.
I, I know further east, that's been a big issue in a lot of hog-producing areas and that kind of thing where you have large farming operations and that's a big deal for some counties probably.
Right. But they left in place all of the protections that were previously there, you know, the, the right of, of a hearing before property can be condemned. All of that is still in the ordinance. So they did not, they did not undercut the actual protections, they just changed in the wording of the purpose.
Okay. So it's state, it's the state wording essentially?
Yeah, it is.
Some of that attitude or approach is spilling over into building codes and land use plan to avoid nuisance there, some of these builders keep facing, I think.
Right, I think, I think that's-
That's a theme, I think it's a little bit of a theme down.
I think that's correct. I think that's correct.
This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing relative to the changes in the voluntary agricultural district ordinance. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this issue? Anyone at all? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and consider the motion to approve the agricultural district ordinance revisions.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amendment to the voluntary agricultural district ordinance as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it is approved. Thank you, Amy, you got the next, our next item is central permitting ordinance update. This also is a public hearing. So I will ask Amy to do the present, and Eric Beard is part of this.
I'm actually gonna defer to Eric.
All right.
I'm gonna be here as backup.
All right. Eric Beard is our fire marshal. You got it.
He's the chairman of the private commission. And he's got one up on me. Amy told me I had to do this on my own. But I told her, I told her I wasn't above turning around and yelling, "Help!" On September 8th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new centralized permitting ordinance to replace the original ordinance adopted in 1991. The purpose of this ordinance is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of Randolph County citizens by streamlining the development permit process through a centralized county permitting system, integrating all development information by partial identifier into a computerized land records management system. The new ordinance was adopted following a presentation from the Central Permitting Advisory Committee, which was formed by the county manager and comprised of representatives from departments directly involved in central permitting. Article D of this ordinance outlines the fire marshal's authorities and responsibility as it relates to permitting and inspections. Session 1 of Article D lists the provisions of the North Carolina Fire Code, together with all the technical codes and standards referenced therein. This code currently consists of 45 chapters and over 200 reference standards. This code also consists of nine appendices, eight of which are not mandatory and enforceable unless they are specifically referenced by the adopted ordinance. The appendices of the code were not included in the 2020 adoption due to the fact that some of the appendices were not applicable to our county or achievable by contractors and developers due to circumstances beyond their control. An example of this can be found in Appendix B, which lists the procedure for determining the fire flow requirements for new buildings. In the past, fire flow requirements listed in Appendix B were often unattainable due to the lack of available water in rural areas. The current Fire Code allows the code official to reduce the fire flow requirements and/or utilize alternative methods such as fire department tanker shuttles to achieve minimum fire flow requirements. Our goal here is not to seek reduction in fire flow requirements, but to have the ability to require the maximum fire flow in areas that can meet the provisions of the appendix. Other appendices within this code address fire hydrant distributions and fire department access roads. The provisions of these appendices will become increasingly more important as our county continues to grow. The recommendation to adopt these appendices were unanimously approved by the Central Permitting Committee on May 4th, 2023. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, your consideration of the inclusion of these appendices in this request certainly be appreciated, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. This is a public hearing. We're gonna open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the proposed amendments to the central permitting ordinance update? Anyone at all? Hearing done, we close the public hearing and come back to the commissioners. Is there other questions or comments relative to Eric or Amy? So, really don't think, we're just adding all these appendices to the ordinance.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the central permitting ordinance as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Allen. Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it is approved. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Item H. Good afternoon, thanks for your patience.
Good evening. I hope everybody had a good Labor Day. I'm here to request approval, your approval, to create a deputy medical director position in the health and classification plan and add one deputy medical director position to the emergency services department. This is a position that we funded in the past via standard contract. As you know, Dr. Jason Sipar is our medical director. He's considered a part-time county employee with a contract outlining his responsibilities and other expectations. The deputy medical director will assist and share responsibilities with the medical director, including providing instruction in our monthly in-service training and the new paramedic academy, reviewing patient care reports for quality management, responding to emergency calls in the community, and more. The cost for this part-time position is eight, not 80, $8,000. The funds are available in my current budget. Our in-house counsel, Ms. Scotten, will draw up a contract outlining those responsibilities and expectations if approved. So to summarize, I'm requesting the board to approve, to create and add one deputy medical director position to the classification plan and authorize the county manager to sign the contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Is this, is the $8,000 all salary? How about travel or anything? I don't know where this person will come from. I know Dr. Siparo traveled.
We are gonna open it up for at least a week to anybody that's interested, but for that amount of money, we really don't find anybody, a physician. So this is pretty much like a stipend. They'll be considered a part-time employee and set hours per month for a total number of hours to equal up to this amount, and.
But they don't qualify for benefits.
They'll put them in the retirement, but at a minimal, minimal level. They won't make much of it. We do have one person, Dr. Nick Ashford, who is a West, Atrium Wake Forest Baptist Emergency Physician. He's fresh out of school, a couple of years, board-certified emergency physician, and he's already considered, just on paper for policies and things, as our deputy medical director. And he is interested in the position, but we will open it up to see if we have any others that are interested, and if not.
Is that, is that pay as needed, or is it a monthly amount?
It's monthly or every two weeks, just like we're paid monthly.
But it's a fixed, every pay period?
It is. And like I said, we did this several years ago, and when the deputy medical director then stepped away from the contract, we didn't fill it back. So we waited, see how things go. With adding the academy and some other things, we'll bring it back.
All right. Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion. I think it's, I think it's a little for a whole lot. So I think it's well worth $8,000. So I'd like to make a motion to create and add a deputy medical director position to the classification plan and authorize the county manager to sign the contract.
I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Will you be back if you don't, if you can't hire for that amount?
Pardon?
Will you come back?
We'll talk.
I'm curious.
He's afraid.
I'm curious. Okay, our next is our opioid abatement fund. Will Massey.
Thank you, Chairman. We've already established an opioid fund as required under the memorandum of understanding. However, the recommendation from the beginning was that it was to be a multi-year fund. Problem is, general statutes don't allow us to create a multi-year fund unless it's a grant. The Department of Justice is not considering this to be a grant. And so, nothing's gotten resolved over the past couple of months. DOJ sent a letter out in July saying that you couldn't use a multi-year fund. So we have these contracts, we've awarded the treatment options that y'all did a couple of months ago. We need to go ahead and get this fund established, so long-winded saying, you know, we're gonna change from a multi-year to an annual fund. So this will start to be in the annual budget, and while you may have approved 150,000 over three years with the contracts, the annual budget's only gonna have the 50,000 per agency each year. So that's kind of the difference for right now. It doesn't change your award, it just changes how we're budgeting.
All right.
So we have received to date over 1.9 million dollars. We've had some interest earnings. What we'd like to do is close the opioid settlement fund that we had initially created and have you create a new opioid abatement fund. I've changed the names just to be able to create some distinction here, but the 1.9, the 44,000 would be transferred over to the opioid abatement fund. So there's a resolution to establish opioid abatement fund with the initial, you know, contracts, and also the 300,000 that was approved for the Health Department to employ a strategic planner. That would also include whatever travel and operating expenses that would be with that. And then we also have budget amendments to close the settlement fund and transfer all those resources to the new annually-funded abatement fund. Clear as mud?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. It continues. Any questions, Will? I think it's pretty much procedural right now in the process. Do I have a motion? It's a long one.
Mr. Chairman, I move, A, to approve the resolution to establish the annual opioid abatement special revenue fund with the associated budget amendment, and B, to close out the opioid settlement fund, transfer resources to opioid abatement special revenue fund, and approve the associated budget amendments.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
We have to read.
Further discussion? Any questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it is approved. That concludes the business portion of our agenda tonight. Hal, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a brief comment I want to make tonight. I think Chairman, Vice Chairman Allen said it best, he said he was a young man. I don't think that's, is it? Might be. I think Commissioner Allen said it best when he said that he was a young man when it started with the agricultural center. Well, I was really a young man when I started working with Randolph County, which was this month, September, back in 1975. College degree, just out of four years in the Army, and here it is 48 years later. And I wanted to let the board know after some of our conversations, I will be retiring December the 31st. January 2nd will be my last meeting as a county manager. I know there's gonna be plenty of time to say a lot of things. Somebody said, "Well, what are you gonna say?" I said, "Well, after 48 years, I've had just about the opportunity to say everything."
You said.
So, so I just want to say the county is strong. We, I look at staff that's here, and gosh, we have really been through it over the years, and we'll continue the next four months. But we have a strong organization. I can't go on enough about them. They speak for themselves, and it's been a privilege being the county manager these past nine years, and it's been an honor being with Randolph County government for 48 years. It's hard to say those words and look back. David Allen was right. Back then, we used oil heat. Oil lights. We didn't have electricity. I'm just kidding. David kids me all the time.
Well-oil, wasn't it?
Yeah, well-oil. Yeah, we were using that. The historic courthouse was the courthouse, you know?
That's where.
And Quirum Bay was where we went to court. So I've had the honor of seeing so much change and growth in this county and being a part of it, and whether it was law enforcement or emergency services and just you name it, and it's been a real pleasure. But I'm gonna be a grandfather for the first time in November. It's a girl. And we're looking forward to that next chapter in our, in our lives. So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make that, as we've been talking in the past, to make that public tonight. But we've got four more months of a lot of work to do in Randolph County, and we'll do it. So thank you.
We've all known that this time had to come at some point, and it's been my privilege to work with Hal for 41 of those 48 years. And as we mentioned earlier about the 911 GIS system here, a lot of things we didn't have that Hal has been instrumental in bringing to this county and making sure that it was done and done right. And we haven't had do-overs, and things have gone for the best in the support of the community and the citizens and the safety of this, this community, our public school system. And you could always count on Hal. There's some things I would, I know he didn't want to do, but when he was asked to do it, he did it, and he did it very well. We didn't have a historic commission. He started that, chaired it. Our TDA, he was the first chairman of that board that we had. Countywide zoning, we didn't have zoning. We didn't have an economic development corporation. We had none of those things when Hal and Frank Willis and came on the scene in this county and helped to make it possible. And the citizens of this county owe him a great debt of gratitude. And in keeping with that, and Hal has let us know that, we talked a little earlier on our agenda tonight of the market study that we did, we did one with Hal's county manager position. And his manager cohorts peers in our area, that's Davidson, that's Moore, Montgomery, Davidson, Alamance. Hal is, makes less than over $20,000 than any one of those county managers. So in keeping with that, and his retirement benefits, we'll ask the board, and they're aware of this, that we raise Hal's pay to $200,000 a year effective July the 1st, so that the last six months of this year, he will have that salary, which will have an impact on what his retirement income can be for him for the rest of his life. And that's, it's deserved. We aren't giving him anything that he hadn't earned. And certainly, as I said, those that, in other counties, plus this, we hired William in January as our first assistant county manager. Alamance County has two assistant county managers and a deputy county manager and a county manager. And that county manager makes over $20,000 more than Hal does, and he has three assistants working with him. And William is the first assistant county manager. Will Massey has carried that title along with all his duties as the chief finance officer for this county, which is a growing, growing part of the business of this county. As you've seen just on this budget, this agenda tonight, they come fast and furious anymore for us, and there's more coming. But I'm gonna ask for a motion that we increase Hal's pay to $200,000 a year effective July the 1st.
So move.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And Hal, thank you so much. And he won't be far away. And Hal, wake-up call for him and for all of us. He had a little. He had a little medical spell not too long ago that kind of makes you think a little more about things. I assure you, my baby daughter, my baby child, who just retired from teaching school after 22 years, her one son from UNC Wilmington, my granddaughter graduated from state, and her grandson, my grandson, her youngest, started as a freshman at Clemson University. He may be transferring to Duke tomorrow, but when I started this, she was 11 years old, and Hal had already been working here for seven years. So we owe him a great debt of gratitude and appreciation, and he'll be with us to finalize the year and go through the process of how we fill that position. All right. We have a closed session for tonight. David, do you have a motion?
I don't have a motion. I can make one up real quick.
Well, it's on the...
Oh, it's on the back.
It is on the agenda, yeah.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm moving to go into closed session pursuant to NCS general statute 143-318A or 11A4 to discuss matters relating to the relocation or expansion of industries or other business in the area served by the public body, including agreement on tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiation pursuant to North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence performance, character fitness, conditions of appointment, and conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
Do I have a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we're going into closed session.